Council regular meeting on Tuesday, March 26, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We will now have an invocation by Pastor Katie Scott from the Lake Havasu Church of the Nazarene, followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Russ Mascari and Kim McCoy from the Marine Corps League Detachment 757.
Heavenly Father, you tell us in your word, the Lord reigns, he is robed in majesty. The Lord is robed in majesty and armed with strength. Indeed, the world is established firm and secure. Your throne was established long ago. We come to your throne just in thanksgiving and in praise, knowing that you bless us and you protect us. We ask your added protection on our city, on all that goes on here, Lord. We ask for your wisdom. We ask for you to look over us and continue to be with us. And we honor you with our hearts and minds. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe Russ is going to give us, say a few words about the Marine Corps League Detachment 757.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Russ Mascari, past commandant of the Marine Corps League Detachment 757 in Lake Havasu City. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and all for allowing us to share a little information about our detachment with you tonight. Before I get started, I also want to recognize another past commandant of our detachment, James Kim McCoy. Tonight, you get two past commandants for the price of one. What was that price?
Yeah, zero.
Okay. We have 200 members in our detachment, and we're from all branches of the Armed Forces. In fact, we have a member here sitting on your council, Gordon Groat, who was an Army member of the Armed Forces, Army Armed Forces, and is an associate member of our detachment. You find us on our website and Facebook pages. We also administer other Facebook pages, NAMI Havasu, Job Opportunities, the DAV. Most recently, we connected with the Havasu Memorial Walkway. We support active military veterans or families and others in our community. In the past year or so, we purchased or had donated to us four cars, vans, SUVs, which we fixed up and donated to veterans. We're active supporters of the American, of the Arizona Coalition of Military, excuse me, draw a blank there. Anyway, the organization focuses again on serving active military veterans and their families in Arizona. I'll be going to a two-day symposium, April 16th and 17th. I'd better go because I can't remember their name. We support NAMI Havasu and serve on their steering committee. They're an organized family-to-family and peer-to-peer support programs. Also, they have an online course for veterans and their families called NAMI Home Front. Also, a course that focuses on students called Ending the Silence. With all the stress and tension going on with young people today in schools, I think that's a program that will be very strong in this community eventually. We're also a member of ASU Havasu's Community Action Group. I'm our detachment's veteran representative. We work with Director Van Der Eet, his team who support veterans. We have created a flyer, and we'll be posting the flyer on military Facebook pages with over 300,000 Facebook contacts. We're trying to recruit some people into Havasu to go to school here. As you know, the Color Guard Honor Guard performs military honor ceremonies for our fallen brothers and sisters. Almost all ceremonies are performed in Lake Havasu City, but we have traveled to Parker and Bullhead City. We have performed flag folding ceremonies at military honor services, private and public events, schools, 9/11 rededication ceremony, and nursing homes. Our Color Guard Honor Guard also marches in braids in Lake Havasu City Needles, Bullhead City, and Golden Shores. Our detachment provides around-the-clock security for the annual Bloom Festival and Relics and Rods Car Show. We're an ardent supporter of PACE, Patriotic Americans for Constitution Education, a local group here. PACE will be holding our annual award ceremonies at Lake Havasu High School on April 30th, and the first, we'll be presenting colors. We are really gung-ho. Anything that's patriotic hits our hot button. You talk about flags, founding fathers, the Constitution, we're going to be there. Twice a year, we go to Prescott to see veterans who are confined to the hospital. We take gift packages. In the spring, it's all-around, a birthday party for anybody. In December, it's a Christmas party. We take a little gift bag with little blankets, with socks, with toiletries and other materials in that, and present to the veterans who are confined there. Two years ago, in '17, May of '17, we met one of the Navajo Code Talkers who was there at the hospital. We have some great pictures with him and some of our membership. We went in December to see, to be there again. Went to look for him. We couldn't find him. He was in his room. We took some pictures of him and some family members, probably the last pictures of him taken alive because he died the next day. We'll talk more about Code Talkers in a second. We have a scholarship program, committee preparing scholarship awards for three $2,000 scholarships for Lake Havasu High School students. Kim is on that committee that is putting that together. Good grades and a military connection are necessary. We also support the Armed Services YMCA at 29 Palms, California. You know, some of these young men and women and their families don't have enough money to feed themselves, so we took a couple of truckloads and carloads of food and also some cash to present to the Armed Services YMCA, who takes care of doling those items out to needy families. Our most recent undertaking is a Havasu Memorial Walkway. It's been a little quiet. We've gotten together, a new board. We're going to sort of kick that in the butt a little bit this year. We'll have the first installation of memorial bricks on June 8th this year. It will include the original 29 marine Navajo Code Talker memorial bricks, plus upwards of maybe another 60 or 70 bricks. It'll be a very nice ceremony. Cal, thank you for agreeing to be there. We invite everybody. It's going to be a very special, special day for us. The guest and keynote speakers for the event are relatives of Code Talkers and experts have done books and studies on the subject, and they will be the speakers at the ceremony. Other than that, we don't have much going on. And thank you again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, and folks for listening to our story. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to recognize Chief Dan Doyle and Chief Brian Davis. They're both members of the Marine Corps League, too. Dan, Marines. Thank you, and thank you for being here with us this evening and for all the good work you do in our community. The next item on our agenda is our roll call.
Council members, Kal Sheehy.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Groat.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
All right. Number five is a call to the public. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city. Your comments will be limited to five minutes or less. There is a light indicator box on the podium. Green means go, yellow means you have one minute, and red means time is up. If you do have an item you would like to speak to the council about this evening that's already on one of our regular agendas, we encourage you to wait till that time so we can have a two-way conversation. At the call to the public, we will listen intently and be able to give staff direction on any of your feedback. You don't have to sign up to go to the call to the public, but we do have three, and so we'll go in the order in which they signed up, and then anyone afterwards, feel free to join in as well. So the first person is Steve Irwin with the American Red Cross. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Steve Irwin and Kathy Irwin from the American Red Cross here in Lake Havasu City. We are here tonight to share the Sound the Alarm, Save a Life Home Fire Campaign. We started partnering with the Lake Havasu Fire Department last July with the help of Chief Davis to install free smoke alarms. Two weeks ago, we gave Chief Davis our new Havasu phone number, and he made a citywide announcement, which also hit the Havasu News Herald. The phone has been ringing. In the last two weeks, we have installed 91 alarms, replaced 60 batteries, and 54 homes. Since starting our partnership last July, we've installed 175 alarms, replaced 103 batteries, and 141 homes. Thank you, Chief Davis, for your partnership. Appreciate it. Last week, we were also contacted by Vice Mayor David Lane. He asked us to install some alarms in one of his neighbor's homes. He has also been sharing it with his neighborhood watch, and we received many phone calls from that group already, too. And he asked us to come here tonight to speak about this program. Thank you, sir. Every eight minutes, the American Red Cross receives, responds to a disaster, and the vast majority of these are home fires. In a typical year, home fires kill more people than all the natural disasters combined in the United States. Three of every five home fires happen to a home that either has no smoke alarm or a non-working smoke alarm. That's why the American Red Cross launched the Home Fire Campaign in 2014, to help prevent these needless tragedies. To date, the American Red Cross has installed 107 million red alarms and has credited for 522 lives. I've met two of these people in Yarnell last year, and they absolutely swear they would not have made it out of the house without a fire alarm. Starting on April 27th, and through May 12th, the Red Cross has a national-wide program, and our goal is to install 100,000 smoke alarms. We encourage everyone to take two steps to help keep their households safe. Fire experts agree that people may have as little as two minutes to make it out before it's too late. We urge everyone to install smoke alarms, create a home fire campaign, fire escape plan, and participate in those drills until everyone is out in less than two minutes. Another part of the Red Cross is a home fire campaign called the Pillowcase. This little jobbie here. We train schoolchildren between third and fifth grade on how to create an escape program and emergency preparedness kit. And it's done with this simple little pillowcase. Some families have survived because their children have taught them how to escape the home. This is a free youth preparedness program also. For more details on having a smoke alarm installed or the Pillowcase project, please call our office at (9) 287-990568, or visit our office in the shops of Havasu, Suite 416, or at americanredcross.org. Thank you for allowing us to share the Sound the Alarms, Save a Life Home Campaign, and collectively, let's continue to keep Havasu a safer place to live. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Next, we have Dr. Lorraine Byrd, who would like to come up to the podium. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here, and I have some exciting news to share with you, I think. You know, we're all interested in quality medical care and accessible medical care, and in Havasu, right now, we're kind of in an unusual situation where the accessibility is kind of lacking in certain areas. Many of our adult physicians and providers are retiring or have moved away, and in pediatrics, we only have Dr. Oyas left was the only one. So families have had a difficult time sometimes getting care, the care that they need. So I'm here to tell you that we have some solutions for that. We have a brand-new medical practice in Lake Havasu. It's called Moore MD. It's located on Enio Drive, where Dr. Delott and Dr. Hankins used to be, and there was a neurology practice in there most recently. So we're brand-new, and we have, Dr. Rahaj Mohindra is the owner of the practice. He has practices also in Surprise, Prescott, Prescott Valley, and then now in Lake Havasu. We've been open since January. We have family practice there. We have Dr. John Moran, a board-certified family practice physician, who's been practicing pretty significantly in the Tucson area and has been a hospitalist mostly, but he's there. We have two nurse practitioners that are providing primary care for adults. Sarah Gromon is here with us. She also sees neurology patients and geriatric patients. Dr. Mohindra is a geriatrician and an internal medicine specialist. He's actually flying some specialists up to our area because we know that sometimes we just don't have that specialty care, and people have to travel. So we'll have an infectious disease specialist, a neurologist, and an endocrinologist that will be coming up on a regular schedule, but probably once a month or so, until, depending on the demand and the need. And then my most excited part is that Dr. Mohindra asked me to establish a pediatrics practice there at Moore MD. So that's what we're doing right now. We're open. We're seeing children, from newborns up to 18. We're providing their immunizations for them, their well-child care, and their medical care. So it should be somewhat easier for parents and families right now. So we have some of our staff here. Celeste is here, and she's our head MA, kind of do-it-all person at the practice. We've got some brochures that tell about all of us that are there. And so we welcome you and just like to let you know about this new addition to Havasu. I think it's a good one, so come see us. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Lisa Kruger from the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Mayor Sheehy and council members. I am back tonight to introduce you to some more of our new chamber members. I was not here last month because I was at Chamber Day at the Capitol, so I apologize. I wasn't here last month, but we are here tonight with four of our new members, and I think they all want to say a couple of words, so I'm going to keep this brief. We have Donna Brock is here from Amazing Oils. Donna is right here. We have Cassie McShane and her sister Cory. They're better known as the Smash Sisters from Have a Smash. And we have Andy Hall and Duane here from Global Stone Imports. Dr. Byrd has already spoken, but Moore MD actually joined the chamber today as well, so we are happy to say thank you and welcome to Dr. Byrd and Sarah and Celeste and to Richard. So I'm going to just let them say a couple of words here.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to introduce my business, which is relatively new in the city. I am a DoTERRA wellness advocate, and I look forward to speaking with anyone who has questions or wants to learn more about using essential oils as a wellness regimen. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Smash Sisters here. We are Lake Havasu City's first recreation rage room. You come into our facility, and you smash out any destructive need or any stress relief or just for fun. We are located on the corner of Akoma and McCollik, right across from the Bank of America, and we have some flyers for you guys later on, and come and see us. Come smash with us. It's a good time. Thanks for having us.
Hello, my name's Andy Hall, and I've been doing stonework and been in the granite business for 25 years in the Southwest here. And we just opened our second location here in Lake Havasu. We opened on Monday, so we'll be supplying natural stone, granite slabs, and quartz for countertops and, you know, all types of interior needs for the fabricators here in town and for the consumer, too. So come see us. We're at 771 Lake Havasu Avenue there. Right, if you're going to Rusty's, we're right on the left. So we've got a lot of stone in there, five containers, and a whole bunch more on the way. So, yeah, please stop by.
So I want to thank our new members that joined us this evening. And just a reminder, the reason that the chamber is doing this is because we want to make sure that we introduce to you the new businesses and the new chamber members who are generating that revenue and those sales taxes and all those things that keep our city ticking. So thank you very much for giving us this opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Would anyone else like to address the city council during the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item six is our consent agenda. We have two items on there. Would any council member like to remove one of the two?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Yes.
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager Report. Item 7.1 is Announce Vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member. Board of Adjustment, two regular members, three alternate members. And the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one regular member. Citizens interested can pick up a packet at City Hall. They are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. And item 7.2 is our City Managers Report. Mr. Knutson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start off the report this evening with a recognition with the former mayor, Mark Nixon. Back in November, we announced our former mayor, Mark Nixon, was awarded the Copper Star Award from the Unified Arizona Veterans. On March 16th, he proudly accepted this award in person. Thank you, council member Donna McCoy, for attending and sharing the photo with us. This revered award was given in honor of his achievements for consistently providing exemplary service to military veterans and their families who reside in the state of Arizona and in Lake Havasu City. Vice Mayor Lane attended a Patriot Guard Riders Mission Welcome Home Deployment Event for Jacob Woodward and presented him with a key to the city. Woodward is a 19-year-old U.S. Army private stationed at Fort Carson, Colorado, and is being deployed to Kuwait, Afghanistan. Jacob is a 2017 graduate of Lake Havasu High School. We wish him well and certainly thank him for his service. The Lake Havasu City Police Department, in conjunction with the Western Arizona Law Enforcement Association, invited members of the city council to an open house at the new training facility just last Friday. The facility features their new Vitra 300 Training Simulator. Sergeant Frank Hayden and a couple of our law enforcement professionals demonstrated virtual real-life scenarios that officers could face in their career, and how this training and equipment sharpens reaction times, judgment, and the skills necessary to protect our community. Council member Jim Dolan volunteered to test out the simulator pictured in the bottom right, and both council member Donna McCoy and council member Jim Dolan tested their skills with the taser gun. And we had Public Works manager Mark Clark volunteer to be tased, and he did survive. I'm told that if you're tasing someone, you have to announce a warning before deploying it. However, Mark declined the warning and said, "Just do it," before hitting the ground. Mayor Sheehy, along with Vice Mayor Dave Lane, proclaimed March 22nd as the inaugural Dunham Magical Night of Music in Lake Havasu City, honoring James A. Dunham, who passed away just last April. James was a music lover all of his life and a gifted singer and pianist. Mayor Sheehy encouraged all citizens to continue to support the efforts of this organization and their initiative to keep music alive and thriving in our community and schools, just as James would have wanted. Vice Mayor Lane presented a proclamation to the Lake Havasu Little League Baseball Board at their opening day just last Saturday. Vice Mayor Lane threw out the opening pitch to kick off the day's games. Thankfully, no one was hurt. Lake Havasu Little League baseball program currently has 350 kids, 12 volunteers on the board, and a handful of volunteers who umpire and work the snack bar. In addition, we did, we received a letter from David Moore, who is the PIO for Havasu Senior Softball, coaching coordinator for T-Ball, and coach for pitch and for AA minors as well as the Havasu Little League. And he sent along a message that I wanted to share tonight. It says, "I'd like to thank Tim Rodriguez and his crew at Dick SAMP, Sarah Park, and Rotary Ballfields, along with city staff Leslie in the office, and especially Gary and Courtney. They've been very conscientious in their maintenance of Sarah Park and Dick SAMP Park. They are knowledgeable and understanding when I ask for solutions to issues that we have with Little League and the Havasu Senior Softball League. They are extremely valuable employees, and we appreciate their efforts." So nice work to our staff and maintenance services, and keep up the good work. Mayor Kal Sheehy participated in the Chair the Road Memorial Bicycle Ride this last weekend. The bike ride is in honor of four cyclists who were killed by cars in Lake Havasu City: Ken Stam, Stanley Alger, Larry Smith, and Deb Robinson. And to educate the cyclists, who use caution and wear helmets. There was more than 70 bicyclists who rode the event over the weekend. Lake Havasu City Airport invites the public to a public information workshop in just two days. It'll be Thursday, March 28th, at 5:30 in the evening. Public is encouraged to come out and learn about our master plan, the latest news regarding the airport, and we'd like to hear from you as far as what your vision is for the future of the airport. And on Friday, we are honoring our Vietnam veterans with an open invitation to all service members and veterans at the upcoming Vietnam Veterans Breakfast. It's this Friday, March 29th, starts at 8:30, and will go to about 10:30. It'll be at the London Bridge Resort Convention Center, which is located at 1477 Queens Bay. Doors open at 8:30. There's a presentation of colors from the Marine Corps League, and to kick off the event at 8:45. There's a free traditional breakfast for all service members and veterans. It's sponsored by the London Bridge Resort, and that'll be served at 9:00 AM following a short ceremony. So please come out on Friday and help us recognize and honor our Vietnam veterans. The Havasu Youth Advisory Council is hosting Screens, Social Media, and Mental Health Workshop with the Havasu Community Health Foundation, #UMATTER, group on April 2nd from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM at the Aquatic and Community Center. This is a free workshop that's funded by #UMatters, or excuse me, #UMatter, and features Katie McPherson, an educational consultant and speaker with 23 years of experience as an advocate for children, as she's a school administrator and a guidance counselor. Learn what every parent needs to know about how often the hidden impact of screen time and social media, what that has an impact on your child's wellness, internet safety, social media responsibility, and childhood brain development. Parents with children ages 11 to 17 are encouraged to attend this workshop. This workshop is in conjunction with Hayek Initiative to Increase Mental Health Awareness and Suicide Prevention in Lake Havasu City, and is part of their democracy competition that they're competing for this year statewide. And lastly, the next coffee with the mayor and city manager is Friday, April 5th, at the Aquatic and Community Center. It'll be just outside in the courtyard area. We'll start at 8:30 AM and go till right around 10:00 AM. Residents are encouraged to attend and express any issues and concerns or questions. The meeting does not require an RSVP, so please come and join us. I think at the last meeting, we had about 50 people that were in the room and another 25 or so that were on Facebook Live, so I encourage folks to come down. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for the city manager? All right. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, the public hearings, 8.1, Adopt Ordinance Number 19-1214, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 2.04, City Administration and City Council Regarding Meetings, Future Agenda Items, Requests, Call to the Public, Ordinances, and Boards and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, at the City Council Planning Retreat in January, staff sought direction from the council regarding council processes, including future agenda items, council requests, public requests, call to the public, and boards and commissions. The proposed ordinance tonight for adoption makes the following changes necessary to carry out the direction received, along with a couple of other proposed revisions. This item was introduced on March 12th, and there were no suggested changes or revisions.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Do any members of the council have any questions? Just a couple of things to clarify in the code. There is a change to the call to the public. Currently, the call to the public is the opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter within our jurisdiction. Currently, they have five minutes for that, but it's a one-way conversation, so there is no opportunity for council to be able to give any feedback. So we looked around the state of Arizona to see what other So we looked around the state of Arizona to see what other communities were doing and the average time's three minutes throughout the state of Arizona. So we'll be reducing the call to the public to three minutes. However, during our public hearings, the, the citizens will still have the opportunity to address the council for five minutes. Now, with that being said, the chair, so in the case of council, myself as the mayor or a chair of any of our boards or commissions can grant additional time if, if warranted or deemed necessary for the conversation. So I think it's an important point of clarification that, that is a major change, but it's, it's really moving to, to look towards efficiency. And to answer a question of, of why we're doing this at all is during our council planning session in January, the city council had the first opportunity for this council that was elected to have the opportunity to discuss procedures and what we do. And oftentimes, people just do things because that's how we've always done them. So we took the opportunity to look at it with myself as new mayor, new council members, and new city manager to, to see if that still made sense for, for our community. And that's why a lot of these revisions were there. So just a point of clarification for, for those watching at home and those in the audience. With that being said, before I open the public hearing, do, do any other members of the council have anything to, to add? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Dolan?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 19-1214, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 2.04, Administration and City Council Regarding Meetings, Future Agenda Items, Requests, Call to the Public, Ordinances, and Boards and Commissions.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Dolan and a second by Vice Mayor Lane. Does any council members have any additional comments? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Our next item is item 8.2, Adopt Ordinance Number 19-1215, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 11.06, Parks and Recreation Regarding Student Member Board Requests and Community Services to Parks and Recreation. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, this is a campaign and item to the previous item, which may changes to City Code Chapter 2.04. Within that chapter, there was a section including referring to general relating to board requests and how a board member would make a request for an agenda item. So with that, there were revisions to Chapter 11.6 were needed, as well as some cleanup items. This ordinance was introduced at the last meeting and there were no suggested changes or revisions. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any, any questions or comments? When I was reading through the proposed ordinance, it, it brought to mind some of the duties that we have our boards, committees, and commissions and, and what it is that we instruct them to do. They're an outreach group that are directed by, by us as the council to do the work, the detailed work on, on certain areas. And looking at this, I would like to talk with, with council and have staff bring back some changes that allow us to give an opportunity for us as council to give direction to these boards and, and not so much the commissions, the Planning and Zoning Commission. They, they have work that, that's done each time, but more the board so that we can give them some definitive direction and what we would like them to see or, or advise us on. So if that's agreeable with the members of the council, we can have staff take a look at that and bring it back to us for a future date. All right, perfect. Any other questions, comments, or feedback? All right, this is a public hearing. Would any citizen like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Oh, no. Yeah, I think Vice Mayor Lane had asked if we'd want to table it. No, I think this is, this is perfect. This is, would be just a future item to, to address how, what type of direction we give, but I think this on first read had, had solid feedback from, from the council. We also discussed this during our council planning session in January. So I think as this is written for, for the purpose of this, I think it's, it's good to move forward, but just have staff bring back some additional information on how we can give them direction, which I think would also be helpful for the members of the boards. You know, they volunteer their time and they, they participate actively in the conversations, but not, not all the information necessarily flows back and forth. So I think if we could define that and make it easier, we could use the power of, of these very engaged citizens that are, are volunteering their time to provide some great feedback to, to the community.
All right, then I will make a motion.
Yes, Vice Mayor Lane?
I move to adopt ordinance number 19-1215, amending Lake Havasu City Code Chapter 11.06, Parks and Recreation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you. Item nine is Current Events. Do any members of the council have any council committee reports? Seeing none, item 10 is our final call to the public this evening. Would anyone like to address the city council on any matter? Seeing none, we'll close the, the call to the public. Item 11 is our future meetings. Our next regular meeting is on Tuesday, April 9th, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. On Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019 at 6:00 p.m., we have a regular meeting. And on Thursday, April 25th, 2019 at 9:00 a.m., we have our Budget and CIP Overview Work Session. Item 12 is Future Agenda Items. Do any members of the council have any items that they would like to suggest? All right, 13, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Have a good evening. Thanks for being here.[1784.51]